Yes.
This as well, yeah.
Yeah, those are for the guests.
Okay.
All right, thank you and welcome to the City of Hutchinson, City Council Meeting for January 21st, 2020, the 9:00 AM meeting. Linda, if you would, please call the roll.
Deckent.
Here.
Dave Line.
Here.
Soldner.
Here.
Pyros DeCarvallo.
Here.
Inskeep.
Here.
Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kim, you'd be so kind.
Good morning, my name is Kim Beery. I am the pastor at Trinity United Methodist and you're invited to join me in prayer. God of all creation, remind us that when the earth shakes and the cold wind howls, that you are present and faithful. Let us give thanks for the many ways that your blessings fill us with hope. You are our stability during times of transition and change. Today, we are gathered to work together to make our community a better place, bless and guide our leaders, lead the discussions, and help everyone work together for the greater good of all. We ask all this in the name of Jesus the Christ, we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Kim, and how appropriate with the earth shaking, the cold wind blowing.
Mr. Mayor, John Deardorff, City Manager, just wanted to take a few moments to recognize our outgoing council members this morning. And first of all, I just want to thank both Councilman Inskeep and Mayor Inskeep, sorry, Councilman Decket for your commitment and service to this community. I know city staff, we've enjoyed, you know, the relationship that we've developed with you over the past four years. And, you know, you haven't always agreed with us, but you've both been very respectful of our opinions and our recommendations and we really do appreciate that. And I can personally attest to the amount of time and effort that each of you put forth for this community during your time on the city council. And I really, you know, until people have really walked in your shoes, they have no idea of the amount of time, the amount of effort, energy, and thought that you guys put in during your time on the city council. And it's not an easy job, you guys know that, but you guys did it the right way, you really did. And what I've really enjoyed about both of you is just the different styles that you brought to the council, each of you every week, and how you approached issues differently, and the respect that you showed for each other and the balance of the councils, you guys debated and discussed items and you guys again did it the right way. And you always did it with class and really appreciate your service to this community. So I want to ask both of you to join me down here at the podium along with Vice Mayor.
Can I say a few words and then you're welcome to say a few words as well? Steve, your passionate advocacy for historical preservation and housing are just two of the many ways that you've made a deep and lasting contribution to this community. The manner in which you always approach every agenda item with such consideration and thorough examination is admirable and shows how much you care, how seriously you take your service. Your courage to try new things and to challenge the council to look at things differently has really made this body stronger and better. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Had the opportunity to make a few comments last meeting and I won't repeat those other than to say that I have enjoyed serving with this group of people and that I have been honored. I've enjoyed the privilege and I've been humbled by the opportunity that I've had over the last four and a half years to serve as a council member for the City of Hutchinson, a city that is not my home city, but certainly has become my home and has been for the last thirty some years and will continue to be and that I'll continue to support, to make better and to champion those things that I support. So Jade, thank you very much for your kind comments, thank you.
Hey Dave. Dave, you've truly left Hutchinson better through your service. Now, your passion for park and trail development, your deep work to expand entrepreneurship opportunities, to help grow small business in Hutchinson and countless other things you've worked on, all while raising a small family and running a business. It's just, it's incredible and you've left a positive mark on Hutchinson. Your service has been marked with such a patient and humble leadership. I'm always so impressed with your dedication to getting back to every single person who reaches out to you. And we're certainly going to miss your sense of humor that made the really long meetings a little more tolerable, so thank you for your service.
Yeah, I'm the same as Steve. I said my piece last time, so, but I do want to reiterate that I did enjoy serving. I think we did leave some things better even when we didn't disagree or didn't agree, excuse me, as citizens or as council members. At least we were having conversations and I feel like through those conversations, that's how we find some common ground. And hopefully that was conversations, not hopefully, I know those conversations will continue. The other thing I learned is that brevity is appreciated, so I will get out of here. Thank you. So John, do I just pack up?
Not yet. We've got a box back here for you.
Next item, please.
Item four, administration of oath of office.
Steve and Sarah.
Raise your right hand and please repeat after me. I state your names.
I, Steve Garza.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the State of Kansas.
Of the State of Kansas.
The ordinances.
The ordinances.
Of the City of Hutchinson, Kansas.
Of the City of Hutchinson, Kansas.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
Of council member for the City of Hutchinson.
For the council member for the City of Hutchinson.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Item five, election of mayor.
Yes, I would like to nominate Jade Pyros DeCarvallo as the next mayor of the City of Hutchinson.
I will second. Dave Line.
Yes.
Soldner.
Yes.
Bagwell.
Yes.
Garza.
Yes.
Pyros DeCarvallo.
Abstain.
Item six, election of vice mayor.
I'm sorry, yeah. Do I need to do the oath?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And it will, Sarah, you'll slip over that other chair and she'll, yeah. Oh.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Jade Pyros DeCarvallo.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the State of Kansas.
Of the State of Kansas.
The ordinances.
The ordinances.
Of the City of Hutchinson, Kansas.
Of the City of Hutchinson, Kansas.
And that I will faithfully perform.
And that I will faithfully perform.
The duties of mayor.
The duties of mayor.
Of the City of Hutchinson.
Of the City of Hutchinson.
So help me God.
So help me God. I know, I took over your stuff. I'm sorry. Next item, please.
Item six, election of vice mayor.
Are there any nominations, is there a motion?
Yes, I would nominate Nancy Soler as vice mayor for the City of Hutchinson.
Second. Please call the roll.
Dave Line.
Yes.
Soldner.
Abstain.
Bagwell.
No.
Garza.
Yes.
Pyros DeCarvallo.
Yes. Next item, please. Oh, we probably need, does she need to also do the oath?
Yes.
Sorry, this is.
I have to do that. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Nancy Soler.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the State of Kansas.
Of the State of Kansas.
The ordinances.
The ordinances.
Of the City of Hutchinson, Kansas.
Of the City of Hutchinson, Kansas.
And that I will faithfully perform.
And that I will faithfully perform.
The duties of vice mayor.
The duties of vice mayor.
For the City of Hutchinson.
For the City of Hutchinson.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you.
At this time, we're going to take a fifteen minute recession to help honor the outgoing members and celebrate the new members who are just sworn in. So if you'd like to join us in the lobby, we have some refreshments out there.
Are we back on? We're good? Okay. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item seven, oral communications from the audience.
If you could please state your name and address and limit your comments to five minutes.
Good morning. This is Richard Griever, 3409 North Maple, here in Hutchinson, Kansas. Citizens have been buying some of these old dilapidated homes here in Hutchinson to fix them up, but instead of getting an attaboy or some concessions or some help, they almost immediately get a "you bring this to code or we're going to throw you in jail." That's all I've got to say. This is from the previous administration. Hopefully, the new administration will correct this and get this Gestapo off our backs.
Thank you, Richard. Are there others in the audience who would like to address the council on items that are not on the agenda?
Yeah, my name's Mitch Gumbel. I live at 1506 Linwood Drive. And I was in here at the last meeting. I talked to everybody. And what I ended up getting out of that was, that was on the seventh, on the ninth, I got two new violations on two new properties because I came in complaining about John Vedder. I think we proved without a doubt that he's a bully, he's a liar, and we still got nowhere. We came in here this morning, we looked at the flag, liberty and justice for all. Right?
Absolutely.
Then we had a prayer. And in that prayer, they talked about everybody working together. I'm treated like a criminal in this town because I buy distressed properties and I fix them up. And the city wins as well as I do. You get a lot more money on those properties because when they're finished, the tax goes up. I can prove it. So what am I here in trouble for? I've been in court 10 times in the last, in the last year and a half. I was given an illegal trial, in my opinion. I get sentenced on the 28th of February. I've come in here and it falls on deaf ears. I can't work with Trent Maxwell or John Vedder anymore, so they have me working with Paul Brown. You asked last time, can you meet 50/50 with him? I came in and I asked Paul. I said, here, I'll work with Andrew. Andrew's always treating me like a human being. Nothing. I brought all my grievances to Paul? Nothing. Paul called me twice, but when he called me, it was all about the violations and time limits of getting them done. Not once did we talk about inspectors and how they're treating me. And I know that they say that they give us one month and that we don't go to, we don't go to court, but that's not it in my case. John takes them all to court. They're not finishing that one month, but what it is, is he piles them up. I get four or five at a time. And they all have one month. A third grader would know that that can't be done. I don't hire people to do this work. I do it myself. It's the only way you can make money in this business. So I just wish that we could work together. We got a new council here. I think maybe we can make some changes and we can all make us feel like we belong here. I haven't had a traffic ticket in over 20 years. A traffic ticket. Never spent a minute of my life in jail. Never been arrested. Raised three kids in this town. Same with them. Brought them through the schools here. They've never been arrested. We're good citizens. Any other town would love to have me as a, as a citizen, but Hutchinson treats me so poorly. And I can back up everything I'm saying. So I want you five to really, really work hard on making this to where we don't feel so badly.
Yeah, Mitch, I really appreciate your comments. Certainly appreciate your investment. And I'm sorry if the city's done anything to give you an indication that your investment in this town and in distressed properties is not appreciated. I think that we're all committed to finding a solution that works for, for everybody involved. We don't want to lower our standards in housing, but we certainly don't want to penalize people who are trying to fix it. And you're right, a month to fix a property or three, or it's unreasonable that, you know, I've had conversations with you and Jill, I've had conversations with the Housing Commission leadership. And I think that as a, as a city, we're committed to finding a different solution. So I would encourage you to dialogue with the Housing Commission, continue working with the city attorney. You're not going to go to jail ultimately.
Well, I get sentenced on the 28th, on a trial that was very illegal.
Well, you know, ultimately, the, we've discussed criminalizing housing code violations. Probably, actually absolutely not the way we should be going, in my opinion. I'm only one voice here. But I do think that this is a very deep, deep issue. Certainly nothing that can be fixed in five-minute comments. I appreciate you continually coming in and bringing these issues to our attention because if we don't know about it and what's not working, we can't fix it. So I would just encourage you to keep dialoguing and to, and to reach out to the Housing Commission. I don't know if you go to those meetings?
We will, we will not miss any more.
Okay. I really appreciate that.
I had to miss the one the other day because I had to go take care of some graffiti on some buildings, and that was the only day I could paint. So we had, we were here because we were in Paul Brown's office. But when we left there, the choice was to get this done because it's raining the next day.
Yeah. Well, and please know that I'm not trying to placate you. I really believe that this isn't an issue we can fix in a five-minute comment session and we have to, we have to have a deeper community conversation. I hope that that can be initiated through the Housing Commission. If we need to have a different subcommittee working on that, that's something that I would expect Chairwoman Gleason to initiate. But don't give up.
Yep.
I, I do appreciate what you do. I know everybody up here appreciates what you do. You do, you're not, not one of the bad ones. There are a few bad apples out there who are taking advantage of the system. You're not one of those. But I appreciate your advocacy on behalf of, of everyone who's trying to fix up properties. And please know that we are going to find a solution.
Okay.
It's probably not going to be overnight because it's going to probably involve quite a bit of
Right.
Change.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Are there others in the audience who would like to address the council? Good morning.
Good morning. Laverne Pounds. I reside at 512 East Avenue A. If I could take just a moment, I have some data for you.
Thank you, Laverne.
Thanks, Laverne. It's data I've given you there. Pardon, it's not a greatly produced one. It is a printout from the Mid-Kansas, or from Prairieland Realtors here in Hutchinson. I'm a Realtor here in Hutchinson, been here for 37 years in the real estate and auction business. And I've put in some, a couple extra columns there also, but just to give you a brief description of what you're going to be looking at there. There's an asking price you'll notice on there. That is quote, the list price of a property that was put on the board for sale. This data is from 2019, from January 1 through December 31st there, then 2. So, and then again, the, the next column over, I've wrote in there and tried to keep them all on the same lines there basically, was the sold price. So that was ultimately the price that the property sold for. Clear off to the far right, if you'll look over there, this is the difference in the county appraised value for tax purposes and that, or this is what the county states that the property is worth. And then you'll notice as you start looking all through those properties, whether the property was sold below or above the county appraised value and that in there. So it gives you a little bit of something to kind of look at. And if you look at that county appraised property there, or the county appraised values over in that far one there, you'll notice, and on the last page, I've kind of put it together there. And this first list actually is four pages long. There's 104 properties that were sold in 50,000 and under, and this is just in the city of Hutchinson because that's basically where I'm trying to pertain it to. But out of that then, basically, there was 87 properties sold under the county appraisal, 17 sold above.
And these are for properties under that $50,000?
Yes, yes, 50,000 and under. And again, they're in the acrimonical order there as you look at that. So as you go to that last page, you'll see like the list price was 59.9, the sold price was 50,000, okay? And that again was $4,100 under the county appraisal. You'll see some variances in there, basically from a few like $1,500 up to, well, there's highs of $60,000 that are less. Well, obviously, when you're looking at something that's 40, 50, and $60,000 under the county appraisal, it's probably a mistake on the county's part, okay? So they need to look at that. But if you look at these in here, basically what it comes down to here on this one here, 80, almost 84, is 83.65, almost 84% of the properties sold 50,000 under were under county appraised value, okay? And if you look at a lot of those, a lot of those are anywhere from about $10,000 to $20,000. Well, that comes down to basically a 20 to 30% down below the county appraisal. What I'm trying to point out is with what we're having to deal with, with the housing here in Hutchinson and that, you are affecting the market, which ultimately, I think you realize affects how much money and tax dollars you have to work with also. Okay? As these values continue to drop, your tax dollars are going to keep dropping down in there. The very last page also, somebody had asked me, well, what about the multifamily? There weren't as many, but there is some there again. That's an, what was it? 82%, 82% of the properties that were multifamily, and that is duplexes, triplexes, other units like that. 82% of those sold again under county appraised value, 18% above. The total, if you look at that there, on the residential houses, there was $1,666,082 sold less than county appraisal. You know, that's a significant amount. You had another $166,000 on the multifamily. We've got an issue with, we're dropping some values here in Hutchinson. I just, I want you to understand, and I'm hoping that by looking at some of this data, it reinforces what we've been saying is we have an issue here with the city ordinances, city rules and regulations hurting the businesses in the city of Hutchinson. They don't want to come here because they are having to deal with too many rules and regulations. And also the residential part. So look at that data. It is from, from, from the Board of Realtors. I still refer to it as the Hutchinson Board of Realtors. Been there too long for that. But I hope you'll look at some of that because again, it's disturbing. I mean, both sides there, 87% are selling less than the county appraisal. Again, I understand some of those are going to be overappraised. I have given a list of this to the county and they were looking at that saying, wow, there is a big difference here. Because again, the majority of it is 20 to 30% lower. And they have to be, or supposed to be within 10% of real market value. So we're going to start dropping some of those if we don't change. I mean, it's really going to affect everybody in every part of the city of Hutchinson. So I hope you look at that data a little bit. If you've got questions, please feel free to contact me and we'll go from there. Okay?
I've got a question for you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Now, I'm a little bit confused here.
Okay.
And get me straightened out on this.
Okay.
Now, you're saying we have too many rules on this? Is that what you're telling me? Or?
Yes. I mean, what I'm talking about are these rules and regulations that we're talking about, the ordinances and that. We are, I think, actually trying to pick on too many of them also that are cosmetic versus safety and health. I mean, to come up and tell an investor of mine that he needs to replace a roof because there's missing shingles, there's not a leak on the property. There's not a leak anywhere on it, but to tell the city tells them, oh, no, you need to change that because it looks bad. That doesn't cut it, you know? Metal siding that's losing some paint. It is, it's solid. It doesn't have moisture going through the property at all. Yeah, it's got some flake and paint, but it is permanent siding on there. You know, it's not a health issue. It's a cosmetic. Get away from the cosmetic here. Look at the real hazards and that. But there are, there are too many. I pointed some of those out in the past. And again, I'm going to come back to that. I don't like that there's three sets of rules for the city. I gave you the ones in writing and that, but I was told it's not going to change because we can find another ordinance elsewhere that we won't have to, well, it was the trees. Again, violations, writing black and white, but you're not going to do it because it's the city, it's a separate set of rules. I don't like that. So.
Okay, so thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Would it be fair to say that putting a burden on investors, which basically stopped investment in the town, which would investment in the town, which would ultimately increase dilapidated properties because less people are probably going to want to invest? And if they do, they're going to buy it under the market value?
Part of that, yes. I mean, it discourages people wanting to come in and invest in these properties and fix them up. My understanding here is coming in here now this year, it's not just the landlords. It's been a situation where the landlords have had a set of rules and the residential homeowners had a set of rules. Now they're going to do the residential homeowners. You start hitting them like you're hitting the landlords, you're not going to have 50 people in here, you're going to have 500 of them in here if they're picked on as much as this. And it's not, picked on probably is not the proper word. If you're enforcing these types of codes and using such low requirements, low thresholds, I mean, go after the serious ones that are health violations and that type of thing. Cosmetic should not be looked at. And again, it's going to affect the values of the city residential properties, and ultimately it's going to affect your budget.
Laverne, of these 104 properties,
Yes.
are these primarily owner-occupied?
That is very difficult to say, John, because again, that information's not on here when we pull it from there. I mean, I've been in it long enough, I can drive by.
That gets to the core of, in part, the current ordinance that we're operating
Sure, I understand.
On the rental registration and inspection program.
Probably shooting from the hip, I would say the lower-priced values there, probably 30,000 and under, there probably is a 60 to 70% or maybe 70 to 75 that would be investment-type properties. But again, some of these are not basically rental properties. They were properties that, it's a person that's lived there for 40 years. They've passed on or whatever, and the family's coming in to sell, and they say, "Mom and Dad's house here's county appraisal $50,000." And we come in and say, you know, "It's 30." And I mean, if you'll add those to the list price, you'll see a good number of them are listed under the county appraisal to start with. So I know I've gone over my five minutes in, but answering questions, so. But yeah, to tell how much is rental versus residential is very difficult, but my comment would be probably in that 70% range are rental property. But again, those homes also are being bought, fixed up, and then sold for residential homes also. There's a big push for that with a lot of people, investors here in town, that are wanting to flip the homes. So that effect ultimately affects, again, the type of housing we have available, okay? Thank you for your time.
Okay.
Thank you.
And Laverne, thank you for all the work you put into this. This is really, really good information to have. And I think just, you know, depending on which side of the argument you're on, you could interpret it one way or the other, but it's
Kind of surprising, isn't it?
Yeah, and we need to be doing, we need to be doing things that work.
Right.
So this is going to have us taking a critical look at the way we're doing it.
Well, my plan is to get that to the Housing Commission, too. I didn't get it, I tried to get it to Marvin here before that one, and I missed that one. And again, working with the county because they're part of that, too.
Yeah.
I was going to say, the discrepancy on some of these is just
Oh, yeah, no.
I mean, that's just
It's mind-boggling, isn't it? When you look at it and you say, "Gosh, that's a $50,000 under county appraised value, there's got to be something wrong."
There's something wrong.
There is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I hope they will take an initiative and correct.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Are there others in the audience who would like to address the council?
I would, but I don't know if I have to put the microphone. I mean, I really, if you can hear me, then I'm fine.
It's more for recording purposes.
Yeah, it's more for the YouTube piece for, can someone help Jill with the microphone? Thank you so much.
Okay. She hurt me. Okay, thank you. Okay, my name is Jill Gumbel. I live at 1506 Lindwood Drive, and I'm not here with my husband as far as what he had to say today. I am here to talk to you guys about the Central Kansas Landlord Association. When I got on, probably back in last June, I came in, I talked to all of the council people, even the ones that are gone, and was talking about all the things that we want to do to correct our image. Because we have been bashed and beaten in the press, and we've been called everything from murderers to everything else. So we have gone ahead and we started a program that, or we're starting a program, I should say, that's called Cleanup Hutch. And with that, we are starting in April, and we are going to clean up Hutch, one yard at a time. Because we have investors and people that can do these kind of things, we do it for ourselves, we decided we wanted to give back to the community. So we are not helping another landlord clean up their property. We are going to go out into Hutchinson and clean up a owner-occupied home. We decided that we are going to do four because we didn't know how much participation we were going to have on our parts. We know that the demand and the need is way greater than what we can ever accomplish, but what we're going to do is we're going to start in April and go every other month, and our first group is going to be a veteran. So I contacted, let me get my glasses on. I contacted, oh goodness, John Harlow down at the American Legion. And if anybody wants to get ahold of him, if you know a veteran that is needing help with their yard, getting it cleaned up, possibly, you know, maybe windows installed, if they need painting done, these are things as landlords that we know how to do. Obviously, if there's going to be that kind of work, the homeowner's going to have to go and get permits and do what they need to do before we get there, but it's stuff that we can do. We also have landlords who are licensed heating and air specialists. So I've talked to some of them and see if we could maybe go in and do a service for them and just check their heating and air and make sure everything is functioning, that there's not any cracks in the heat exchange, stuff like that, just to help people out. So that is one of the things that we're doing, as far as we could do windows, oh my goodness, yard work, everything. We are going to have a yard sign, we're going to have T-shirts for all the people who participate, and hopefully this will be something that's going to be really, really positive and help change our image. We are also going to be working with the Department of Aging. That will be another group that we would like to help. And then we are also going to be contacting the police department because we know that they are in contact with people every single day and see the need. And we do have a landlord or two that are police officers, so we're going to get their help. And then there's another social service agency that we're going to be in contact with to do our fourth one in October. So there's a lot of stuff that we have going on that's really, really positive. And one of the things I do want to share with you is I know I told you guys that being the new CKLA president, I wanted to educate our landlords. And that's just making sure that leases are legal, making sure that we have lead-based paint disclosures, making sure that we are doing our jobs, not only to protect ourselves, but it also protects the tenants. So one of the things that I know we have heard, and I've been in court with my husband when a lady was threatened to have her house demoed, a little, little old lady, and she didn't have the money, she didn't have the abilities. And the thing that really struck me and just really got under my skin was that the city is coming after people and saying, "We're going to demo your houses, we're going to throw you in jail, we're going to do all these horrible things to you," but they never reach out and say, "There's programs available to help you." So what I did for our meeting, which was last night, was I got ahold of Julia Westfall. She is with SED, and let me get this right so I don't say it wrong, South Central Kansas Economic Development. It took less than 15 minutes to get educated on all the programs that are out there and available, not only just to landlords, but to homeowners. So Mitch, go give them one of these. So I have this that was given out at our meeting that has all the different programs that are available, not only just for us and to improve our homes, but for homeowners to do the same. You're looking at getting new rubs, windows, electrical work, electrical boxes, getting new furnaces. If people have a 60% efficiency furnace that's just not good, they're getting it replaced with 94%. They have $3.2 million that's available to the communities out here in Kansas. They serve 40 different counties, Hutchinson, of course, Reno County being one. And we could do this. Instead of slapping people with these threats and this nastiness, we could hand them a packet like this and say, "Hey, I know you can't do this, but here's programs that can help you." Brush Up Hutch, anything that's available to help people instead of just ridiculing them and going after them and being so nasty about it, there are programs available. Now, I will tell you that this program is a government-funded thing, so as we all know, nothing happens fast with the government. The actual time average, she said, was between 12 months to 18 months from the time that you are approved to actually getting the work done. 30 days isn't going to cover that. But this could get somebody a new roof, this could get them new windows, this could get them a new furnace, this could get them new electrical, new plumbing. It could get insulation, all kinds of things to make this home not only more valuable to the city, but safer and look better. So like I said, it's going to take the city, if we just even had these packages that they could hand out when they're handing out all their citations and nastiness, you could hand this out and say, "Here are the programs that can help you." And it takes five minutes. They don't have to, the city staff doesn't have to be educated on this because that's what SED does. They educate people. But you can hand it out and give them options that are realistic, that people could qualify for and get the help. And it takes nothing, five minutes to hand them a package and say, "Here's what's available." There's even loans out there that are available. People can get low-interest loans. But if you don't know that it's there, you can't, you can't reach out to a resource if you don't know it's there. But five minutes to educate the city, and it costs absolutely nothing to be kind and to be considerate and to treat citizens with respect. And I think that this is an excellent program. I think you guys really need to take a look at it, put it out there, especially in the inspection department, get them trained to do the right thing, and help people out. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Fantastic. Well, Jill, I want to really commend you on the work you're doing with this Cleanup Hutch program. That's going to be incredible. Now, if somebody's, if somebody's interested, would they contact you through a Facebook page or a website?
Oh goodness, no, because I don't have time for that, honestly. Like I said, the need is so overwhelming that we can't possibly address it, which is why we're going to go with certain groups, like the Department of Aging.
And they'll be referred.
Yeah, and they will refer because I'm going to work with one person because other than that, I mean, we were going to hand out applications and say, "If you know of somebody here, fill us out." I knew the applications would be six foot deep, and we have the ability to do four houses this year. Now, I can give you, and I was given permission to give John's name out, so if anybody knows a veteran who needs help, our first house is going to be in April. And John's name is John Harlow, and his number is 620-662-0573. He's with the American Legion. And I know that he is having some issues right now, and he's not always down there, but we can get all this information to the landlords, to us, so that we can figure out who the person's going to be. And quite honestly, it's not going to be somebody who's afraid of heights and doesn't want to get on the ladder, it's somebody who really, truly needs it, has a physical need, they can't get out and do it. We are not going to be able to fund this, of course, because we're just a bunch of broke landlords, but we can go out and we can do the work, and we can paint, and we can clean up yards, we can even put on rubs, we could get the license, or permit, excuse me, to do that, and we can do that. And we've had people who say that they would be willing to help people. So it's really a really neat program. Like I said, I know that the need is way more than we are ever going to be able to touch, but it helps us show you guys that we seriously want to improve this city, not just in our properties, but helping other people do theirs.
Great.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jill.
What about volunteers?
Hey, whatever, come on over. We'll get you a T-shirt. If somebody wants to volunteer, call me, and I can give you my number, I don't care, And no crank calls, please. But yeah, more than welcome. We want it, you know? It will be under the direction of the Central Kansas Landlord Association, but absolutely, if people want to come on board, we will get you a T-shirt, and we welcome the help because there's so much of a need. And you know, there's a lot of church groups and people that say that they can come out and do this, but you know, if anybody wants to get on board with us, absolutely. I mean, we welcome it, we absolutely do.
Great.
So, thank you. Thank you.
Are there others in the audience who would like to address the council?
I'd like to address the council. Is this on? Can you hear me? I'd like to address the council. I'm in Southeast District. I walk the streets, I do my homework, I talk to a lot of people, I call a lot of people on the phone. In my Southeast District, you have a lot of people that are scared to death. They don't want to come up to the City Commission, they tell me about it, and I try to tell them to come up to the City Commission, but they don't want to. That's probably why, because I'm here, and I'm their voice, and I'm going to tell you what they tell me is going on. They're scared of the inspection department, and you know, the inspection department's doing their job. And partly, I thought about this all the time, the inspection department, in a little bit you think about it, they're doing what the council told them to do. I just learned a couple of weeks ago that the council told them they had a year to get this done, whatever, this ordinance done. And that, to me, I know we have to relook at that, but as far as the people in my district, they're scared to death. The people in my district can't afford what we're doing. You come in there and give a lady a fixer porch at $500 or $200, they can't affix, they can't afford that. So what other option do they got? Get a ticket, go to jail? I don't know, I know the jail part is gone, but you're scaring the people of Hutchinson to death. And we got to get back online again and get Hutchinson back. Like I said, when I go to my peers in the Southeast District, I talk to them, I get calls all the time on the Southeast District because I want to hear from the peers, I want to hear from the people. As far as the Realtors concerned, I have a big problem with somebody putting money into this town and has three or four, seven buildings in this town and can't get to them all, and we sit here and keep giving them tickets. I think we should have some way that if a man's trying to do, or a person or industry's trying to help themselves, they should give a lot more time in that. We should look, on the time issue, I have a problem with the time issue, too. The time issue, you've got people trying to fix their houses and trying to get going with their houses, and yet we still pile more and more things on top of them. I think we've got to look at that and change that. I'm proud of people that want to put money into our town, I'm proud of people that want to do this and just quit picking on them. Not picking on them in the sense we have to go in another way of approaching this so people can get the stuff done. At least the people are trying to fix Hutchinson, Kansas. I'm proud of Hutchinson, Kansas, that's where I ran, that's why I'm here. We got to do something else, the people cannot afford this ordinance. We have to do another way. I don't know if it's government, I don't know what it is, it might be grants, I don't know, but we have to do something else. It's not working, it's not working, especially in my side of town. My side of town, I walk it, I walk it when I get a minute, and if you are listening to me right now, don't close the door on me. If you see me knock on your door, I'm not a crook, I want to talk to you, all right? I've had that happen, people close the door on me, don't know who I am. But I'm their representative, and I want to know what's going on. And I'm telling you what I hear what's going on. The inspection department does a good job, and I hate to tell this to inspection department, but I have had calls about John myself. And I tell the people, "Can you come up here?" They don't want to come up here, they're scared to death. They should not be scared to come to your city council members, not be scared at all. This is their town, whether we like it or not, the citizens own this town, not me, not nobody else up here, we're not the owners of the town, we listen to them. That's why I've always said that this is the voice, that's what I ran on, I am the voice of Hutchinson. Don't get me wrong, I've had a lot of people come and tell me that they like this, what we got, because they want the houses fixed up. I like it, too, but I think it's just got to be restructured somehow. First of all, we've got to find a way to afford this and have the kids, have the families in my district be able to afford it. You don't think they want to have their houses fixed? They want their houses fixed. Now, we could donate paint, we can donate labor, but how about the money? Where are we going to get the money to help these people fix their houses? That's the problem that bothers me the worst. How do we, how do we tell these people to fix your houses when the person delivering paycheck to paycheck? Can't be done, guys, can't be done. And what you're going to do is people are just going to close the doors and leave Hutch, that's the last thing we need. We need to work together and get this fixed. I think the number one thing to do about it is getting the money to do it somehow. Banks, I don't know what's the answer to do, but people cannot afford it, in my district anyway. anyway. I have talked to people in the other districts, and they say the same thing. Those are the problems that I see. And like I said, I walk door to door, I just don't sit at my house. I got a job at the, at the State of Kansas, and I get off at two o'clock. I have a job, but people call me and I answer the calls when I can, but we have a big problem here. We need to get it straightened out. And we need to do something about it today, and we need to get it done, taken care of. That's what I have to say, and, and I've done a lot of week of walking with houses and talking to businesses, talking to everybody. Businesses, that's another problem. I have talked to people who want to invest in Hutchinson, Kansas, but they say our laws are too tight. I don't know. Why don't we give our inspection department? If you look at it, our inspection department's doing a good job, if that's the case. But we got to ease up a little bit, because businesses don't want to come here. My God, we need businesses. We need jobs.
Well, Steve, I really appreciate your comments. And, you know, typically, we do reserve council comments for the end of the meeting, but, but that's okay. And, you know, it was certainly timely with the, with the other communication. It's, it's clear that, you know, we have some work to do in this area to make it more of a collaborative effort. And I would encourage anybody who's passionate about it, yourself included. The Housing Commission meetings are actually, I think, at four, so if you wanted to go to one of those, and there's bankers on that, there's people who work in community housing development organizations, there's a lot of different interested parties who, what we typically do is we, they do the groundwork for certain programs, and they bring a recommendation to us, and, and we would certainly debate the merits of that. But it seems to be consensus that there isn't a whole lot of support for what we're doing now. And I, I hear that. I think everybody up here hears that. I also appreciate that you pointed out that staff is just doing their jobs. I know there's a lot of personality differences, and one thing I'd like to see this year is when people come to give council comments, that, you know, let's, let's try to keep the personal attacks out. I, I know that it can feel very personal, you know, when, when staff is handing you a violation of some sort, and it's easy to make them the, the target of your ire. That's, that's all coming from us at, at the council. They're just doing their job. So if we could be respectful and, and recognize how hurtful it would be if somebody attacked us for just doing our jobs, and let's, let's try to work together to figure out a better way to do this.
I agree with you, and I apologize. But the people I have heard from, I hope that our staff is respectful.
Yeah.
And if not, we need to get a handle on that.
You're right. You're absolutely right. You're absolutely right, because everybody at the city works for, works for the residents of the city, so.
On that last comment, I apologize. I didn't know how this works, my first time here.
I think everyone knows that, it's okay.
So, on that note, I'd like to see if we can repeal this. How do we do this?
Madam Mayor, I just would point out that we do have
An agenda.
We have an agenda. We have people that have traveled in for this business today. If we want to repick this up sometime, but in respect to these individuals that have traveled in, we need to maybe move on with the business of today.
Let's go ahead and do that, and if this, this is certainly a, a large enough item that we need to revisit.
Can we put this on a meeting time sometime?
I think we talked about that under council comments.
Under council comments, yes, at the end of the meeting, so that we can respect the people who are here.
All right.
Are there others in the audience who would like to address the council? Hearing none, next item, please.
Item eight, consent agenda.
I would move to approve the consent agenda and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second. Motion and a second. Is there further discussion?
I second it.
Hearing none, please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Pyros DeCarvallo?
Yes. Next item, please.
Item nine, A, consider letter and resolution of support for the Interfaith Townhomes One Development.
Madam Mayor, that item, we received a request for that to be removed from the agenda. The Interfaith Townhomes, they will be coming back at a future meeting.
Okay, but it's still going to be in consideration?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next item, please.
Item nine B, consider letter and resolution of support for the Cow Village One Development.
All right. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor and members of the council. My name, for the record, is Ryan Veitlook, Director of Planning and Development with the City of Hutchinson. There's two items before you this morning, both having to do with a letter of support for CJNR Development Group on behalf of Disability Services of the Great Plains. It will require two, two motions, but wanted to kind of lump them together as this is one prod, you know, it's two projects, but all kind of combined. So, what the request is before you is a letter and a resolution of support for a 21-unit housing development for those with developmental disabilities at 2319 North Waldron. This is known as Cow Village One. And an age-restricted 24-unit housing development at 1624 East 23rd Avenue, which is known as Cow Village Two. So here is just kind of a rough layout of, of the site. So you'll see at the bottom of your screen, just to orient you, would be East 23rd Avenue, and then over to the right, or to the east side, would be North Waldron. So these are two properties that are owned by Disability Services of the Great Plains. The one along East 23rd was rezoned last year to make way for this potential project. What they are requesting, as I mentioned, is Cow Village One, which is a 21-unit affordable housing development for those with developmental disabilities. It is a combination of three sixplexes and a threeplex. And then Cow Village Two would be a 24-unit affordable for how, housing for elderly, and that is a combination of six fourplexes. So these would be low-entry, zero-entry facilities that would fill a need for both affordable housing for elderly members of our community, as well as affordable housing for those with developmental disabilities in our community. And then here's just kind of a rough plan. It's kind of hard to see. There are some representatives from the applicant here as well, who could probably talk a little bit more about this. So what the, what the gist of all this is, is that they are applying for what is called low-income housing tax credits from the state of Kansas, and they are requesting a letter and a resolution of support from the council. Housing Commission recommended approval of this of the vote of 7-0 at their last meeting. And they do believe that this would fulfill a need in the city for affordable housing for both seniors, as well as those with developmental disabilities. With that, I will stop speaking, and we do have representatives from the applicant here as well.
My only question, Ryan, and perhaps to the developers, is this project contingent on being awarded the tax credits?
It is.
It is? So without the tax credits, the project would not go forward, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And I assume that they would be comparable to the existing housing that you have behind off Waldron?
Yeah, please come to the podium and introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about this wonderful project that you have in the works.
I never pass up the opportunity. Well, good morning. My name is Rick Staub. I'm the President and CEO of Disability Supports in the Clayworks in Hutchinson, 2520 North Waldron. It's always an honor to be here. Really appreciate the support that we've had for so many years from you folks and the cooperative nature that we've had with the City of Hutchinson. These, to answer your question, these would be our seventh and eighth developments. The first, in fact, the first one that we did, Northview Village in McPherson, was the first of its kind in America, which was affordable housing built specifically for people with developmental disabilities financed through this Section 42 tax credit financing arm. And so since then, we've done this, again, we've, we've completed six. These would be our seventh and eighth. Each one of those, we've honed the product that we've built. The most recent, we completed in December of 2019, Solana Village in, in McPherson, and we've gone to an all brick and stone. We use high, high-efficiency windows, blown insulation. I mean, these are really great units for the, for the population that we serve. Everything from silver nanotechnology in the flooring to prevent antimicrobial growth to roll-in showers, fully tiled bathrooms. So we continue to hone the product for our constituency. They would be similar in, in nature, but, you know, we've added monitored fire sprinkler systems, onsite storm shelters in each unit. So really state-of-the-art.
Okay, good.
I guess, Rick, for the benefit of the public, can you describe the exact location of, of these two projects, so we're, we're property-oriented, and particularly for the benefit of the public?
This is, and I'm stepping away from the mic, but for those, our campus, and we have three housing developments on our campus, 2520 North Waldron, it's kind of up in this way. For those, just for point of reference, Dr. Schlesbaum Optometry Office sits right here, AgTrak sits right here.
Okay.
We purchased this property several years ago, removed the house in preparation for this potential development, knowing we were going to need the housing. And then we purchased this property last year and removed the, the housing in the outbuildings just within the past few months and achieved rezoning in anticipation of that elderly, the potential elderly complex. We commissioned a, an elderly market study for Reno County. We have one elderly facility here, Maplewood Townhomes, with a waiting list that's, you know, literally, probably, two to three years. Our, our market study that we commissioned indicates that there's the market possibility in Reno County and Hutchinson specifically for more than 400 affordable units for, for the elderly population. And again, the proximity to, you know, kind of the best parts of town for both areas that we serve, the medical community and kind of in the heart of the community, would work out very nicely for, for the folks who are likely to live there.
Rick, I've got just kind of a fundamental question while we're talking about tax credits. Can you just take a couple of minutes and just explain how these tax credits work and how it fits into the project with and without the tax credits?
Because, because of the limited nature of the income, the, the nature of the affordable housing mandates that for these projects to be successful, there has to be an underwriting methodology that allows for the paydown of the cost of the, of, of the construction and just the infrastructure associated with the entities that are, that are, that's accomplished through Section 42 House Tax Credits that are a federal program administered through the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation. It's, it's a competitive, highly selective process. But the, the investors pay for the tax credits that then pay down the debt and pay down the construction costs. There's 30-year permanent financing associated with these loans, but it's at a greater, with these properties, but it's at a greatly reduced amount because of the 15-year life of the tax credits that are bought by largely banks and corporate entities around the country. And so that brings new money to the table. There's tax credits associated that go back to those investors.
To the investors.
They, they use those tax credits for the 15-year usable life, and then those product, those, those tax credit properties have the ability then to emerge from the program or stay in, depending on the wishes, whims of the owner and the underlying developers.
Okay. That, that helps explain, I think, to all of us.
Rick, do you happen to know how much KHRC has to allocate this year?
I don't. I've heard it's really limited, that they have, they have, in prior years, again, the demand for these, as you can well expect, is, is very high. And so we've been fortunate, Disability Supports has been fortunate, that every application that we've submitted has been chosen in the year that it's been submitted, with the exception of Cow Village, which we submitted last year.
We did last year, that's right.
And we were asked to resubmit this year because we had one under construction, an 18-unit development in, in McPherson, and they didn't want to have one that was kind of in the works until the other one was done. I think the, the chances this year, as I, as I understand it, I mean, just through anecdotal conversation, are probably relatively limited. But again, the need is there. We have for the, for the 21 units of DD housing, which is, if, if we're asked by KHRC to Kansas Housing Resource Corporation to prioritize our applications, I'll select the DD to go forward first. These are units that we would have full as soon as they're done, by people that we already serve in the community that would move into a much higher level of housing than they could typically afford with the limited means that they have. So these aren't kind of show units or units for the potential for growth. We've already identified the, the likely occupants of these. There's no way to gauge, Jade, but I think that this year's going to be probably a fairly light year in the fact that I think they've, they've given out some credits in prior projects and have made other commitments. But it's still something that's important to the population that we serve, and we want to make sure that we resubmit the application.
Absolutely. Who's up there now that Fred Bentley retired?
Pardon me?
Who do you work with now that Fred, or at KHRC?
I'm not sure who's following Fred.
I was curious who that, who that contact is. We had a great relationship locally.
Yes, very much.
And what is the notification date if you're awarded?
It's usually in the, about middle of May.
Yeah.
Okay.
The applications have to be submitted by February 1st.
Okay. So you would like for us to vote on this?
Yeah, you bet.
Yeah, it sounds fantastic. I wish you the best of luck, and we'll be sending some prayers in that direction, because this would be great for our community.
Always appreciate your support.
Are there any other questions from the council? Anyone from the audience who'd like to comment on this? Sure.
I would just like to know if, are these going to be on the tax rolls, or are they tax exempt?
Because we're a 501(c)(3) organization, and they're based, and they, and they would be based on the services that we provide in the community, we would seek tax exemption.
Because they're for people with developmental disabilities?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, I, I would also like to point out that the, the streets that are proposed in here would be private drives, so the city will not assume maintenance of those.
Okay.
So that's, I think it's important to know, looking at the overall financial picture and towards the city, so.
Yeah. Thank you, Ryan. If there's no further discussion, is there a motion?
I would move to approve the recommendation of the Housing Commission to provide a letter and resolution of support for the Cow Village One Development and authorize the mayor to sign.
Motion and second, please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Pyros DeCarvallo?
Yes. Next item, please.
Item nine C, consider letter and resolution of support for Cow Village Two Development.
Yeah, hi. Just, just for reference, this is the affordable housing for seniors, part of this project.
I will move to accept the recommendation of the Housing Commission to provide a letter and resolution of support for the Cow Village Two Development and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second. Motion and second, please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Pyros DeCarvallo?
Yes. Next item, please.
Item nine D, consider amendment to the comprehensive plan land use map designation for 925 West Fourth Avenue.
Good morning, Mayor and council. Welcome, council members Garza and Bagwell. Thank you. This is a request to amend the comprehensive plan and to rezone the property located at 925 West Fourth Avenue. And Mayor, with your permission, I'd like to just discuss the whole thing and then save those motions till the end.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay. This is a request, this is a property that currently holds a, is a vacant building, some outdoor storage, acoustic ceiling tile installation business on a property located on West Fourth Here, you can see on the property, the property map, the applicant is requesting a rezone to a commercial district, to the EN district, to put in a salon and spa. The property is currently zoned I-2, and a salon and spa is not permitted in there, and is requesting to rezone it to EN, which is the next adjacent commercial district to that, in that area. Additionally, that property is designated as industrial, that entire block is designated as industrial. Here are some photographs for reference. This is the prop, the building in question on the property. I believe it formerly was a contractor's office, and there's lots of storage behind there that would be useful to a contractor. There's the, the empty sign. There's outdoor storage on this property. There's some vehicles for sale and a camper. There is an acoustic ceiling installation business located in the rear of the property in a transit hut. See, there's, there's a view of the rear. More view of the rear. If you want me to slow down, let me know. There's the back of the building. There's the neighboring property. Okay. The Planning Commission met and discussed these items, the comprehensive plan amendment and the zoning amendment, to make this change. There were two public comments on this, and both were either opposed or concerned about the change. Scott Mengers, the adjacent to the property, was concerned that if that property was rezoned, that future development on his property and other neighboring properties would become expensive because some residential uses are permitted in the EN district, which would then add additional development requirements on neighboring properties if they wished to develop their properties. The factors required for a comprehensive plan amendment are here before you, and the Planning Commission discussed this, and they recommended denial for the request. Just a brief analysis of why they recommended denial and why staff recommended denial to the Planning Commission. Changing this map would erode community expectations for predictable development patterns. That would create a spot zone, basically, on the property. Approving the request would undermine the comprehensive amendment process. If we approved this, that would then create a precedent, well, not a precedent, but to staff would create a precedent, you know, future requests similar to this would need to be approved. And then this would create new commercial property in an industrial district, which may negatively impact existing commercial districts such as downtown, East 17th, opening up the space and reducing the value of those properties that are already zoned commercial, and as we know, many are vacant. For the zoning request, there are seven, nine factors to be requested to look over when you're making that consideration, and they're here for your reference. And that analysis, just a brief conversation on that, rezoning would create a spot zone. Approving the rezone would cause existing uses to become non-conforming, specifically that ceiling installer business, as well as the outdoor storage. It would add additional development costs to the neighbors because there are some residential uses allowed in the EN district. There it is again. No adjacent properties are zoned EN, so it creates a spot, and it goes against the comprehensive plan strategy S-17A3, which calls for eliminating ambiguous districts like the EN. And that is a long-term project to look at these EN properties and properly zone them. But to add more EN to the map would go against what was decided in the comprehensive plan in 2017. So the two motions, we'll start with the comprehensive plan. Sorry. Planning Commission recommended denial to you based on the fact that the factors were not met for both of these applications. And I'm willing to answer any questions. I don't know if the applicant is here today, if we need to table that, if that's a, but...
I had one question, just a clarification. So if we were to, say, approve this?
Yes.
Then business owners who've already invested adjacent to this property would have to, it would kick in another level of development they'd have to do.
Yes, if they were to develop. If that property, I mean, if it's rezoned, that does not right then kick in those development requirements, but it does allow some multifamily uses on the property in the EN district.
I see what you're saying.
And if residential use was established, and it does not require a special use permit for multi-use family, multifamily use, then the neighbors would then have those additional requirements.
Screening, landscaping?
Correct.
Et cetera. I see. Okay, thanks for clarifying that.
I'm having a little trouble, Erin, separating commercial and then popping in this EN because, as I recall, when EN was established, it was done because we were finding houses that were in an industrial area, and because they were zoned industrial, people could not get a loan or mortgage to work on their house. You know, to me, there never was any commercial in there. So where did this come from?
The EN is a district that is allowed, we need to separate the two, I apologize, I'm kind of squishing them together. Under the comprehensive plan map or the future land use map, this is designated as industrial, and in order for this to be rezoned EN, the designation needs to be changed to commercial.
Ah, okay. Okay, now I'm tracking.
And the EN district is a district that is both compatible with commercial and residential land use designations, which is why it's so ambiguous, and that's, we're working on adjusting that, because it does create issues, even when we created it to help with the financing. We're finding roadblocks there as well for property owners with this district.
I must admit, I'm a little conflicted by this whole application process. I typically wear my development hat, and I respect the Planning Commission and the recommendation they made. But, and I look at the map here, seeing basically south of Fourth Street, all the I-2 industrial, and that we're talking about spot zoning, and I know that's kind of a sacrilegious thing to do is spot zoning. But on the other hand, I see the developer wanting to repurpose this property here in an I-2 zone, and that conflicts with your recommendations. I don't have any specific recommendations. I suspect I would support the denial, but I am conflicted by it, and are there other options that could be considered without jeopardizing the whole spot zoning issue in the EN and so on, particularly on West Fourth? I know there's primarily light industrial, and that's been the primary use out there on West Fourth Street, and now we've got an isolated project that, whether this is bad policy or not, I'm not sure, but I am conflicted by it.
Yes. There are a myriad of uses that are allowed in the I-2 district that would be more ideal on this property, including offices for, you can put an office in there now. You can put in a contractor's office. There are a number of uses that are already possible, ways to, and there's already existing uses on the property, so it's already being used. There are already businesses on the tax roll on this property, that ceiling installer business. There, I believe there's some storage and some, and the property owner has said that he has plans to put in self-service storage, which would be allowed on there, and rezoning this to EN would create roadblocks for that use.
But it's a spa purpose is what's creating the issue?
Yes.
Yeah.
Other issues include the traffic patterns that may change when putting in a commercial district, because it's more of an industrial-type traffic pattern. Putting in that commercial is going to conflict in some ways, small vehicles trying to intermingle with large trucks. If anyone's ever driven out there, it's a little different than driving through downtown or on West 17th, East 17th.
Lower the speed limits to 20 miles an hour, and that would solve it.
Yeah, so this...
So it's just the front building is, so they're using the backside of the property for industrial already?
Yes. This Quonset hut here is being used for industrial uses, and there's lots of things you can see all on...
I thought it was odd to have a salon there when I was looking at some of the buildings in the back.
Correct.
That's why I'm so conflicted, because you want to encourage business, but then on the other hand, I'm like, if they put a salon there, are they just using just that one building? So you're going to change the whole thing for that one little building?
Correct.
And I feel like the property is already being used.
And...
And you're negatively, potentially negatively impacting the property there that's already a business that's invested in the community. So it's really, this is a really tough decision.
It is kind of a...
It's a conundrum.
And we've discussed, you know, can you cut the property in half with zoning, but that would require to restart the process.
The lot split and all that.
Really frowned upon, because it's really difficult to track and to manage, and there are properties like that, and we have to have a leash on them to make sure that, like, half their property is one use, the other half isn't. It can create issues.
This is a hard decision for me, because I haven't talked to the people involved. I'd like to get involved. Like I said, I do my research.
I wish he was here, I'm sorry.
I would, as a new council member, I can't make a decision on this. I personally would like to see if we can table this so I can talk to these people and see what their reason is, and I don't doubt our zoning commission. I didn't realize we had to go through zoning and inspection and all that stuff there, right? So I got a lot to learn. But I'd like to talk to all these people and have a talk with them so I can get fully in it before I make a decision. That's the way I feel about it. So I'd like to table it, in my opinion.
Okay.
Is there consensus for tabling?
Sure.
Yeah, I don't care.
I don't have no problem with it.
I mean, if he's not here to defend his position, I think he probably should be if he...
Right.
So I'm amenable to doing that.
It's not a slam dunk, just to outright deny it.
Yeah.
Probably more discussion, clarification from him.
Play on the next meeting.
I would just like to see what his reasoning of wanting to put a salon there and if it's, could maybe be put somewhere else.
Understood.
I mean, I understand, he's like, EN's right across the street, you know, what's the big deal? So I understand that portion, but then when I look at it, the majority of the lot is used for industrial, and you're just talking about one of the small buildings in the front. And then you have to think of how that affects the adjacent buildings that are already investing in the community. So this is a hard one, and I would like to talk. I would encourage a discussion with the owner of why a salon right there in that small building in the front.
I will reach out to him, and I can forward his contact information to you.
So Erin, by tabling this, does this go back to Planning Commission or just yourself and then bring it back to us?
Yeah, just hold on to it to the next meeting.
Yeah, I think it just comes back to us.
Council, please have a motion for that tabling, if that's what you're going to do.
I will move to table the rezoning issue of 925 West Fourth until a later meeting.
Is there a second?
Yeah, a second, sure.
Okay, please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Pyros DeCarvallo?
Yes. Next item, please.
While you stay in there?
Yeah.
I don't know which way that I feel about this, because I do have a property here. I have a houses on that property in 902 West Fourth. How is this going to hurt me or help me if this gets changed? Is it going to make it hard on my property to get sold if I ever sell it?
It's across the street.
Well, I'm at 902 West Fourth.
So the north side of the street.
You're on the north side.
Okay, yeah, there is not as much of an impact. There's a street separation, so there really will be no change to your property values, to any development requirements.
I heard you talk about loans, getting loans, residential limits.
The EN district, it depends on your financer, but we have seen some roadblocks in the EN district for financing. I would recommend talking to your professional, your bank, to see if that is the reality for you. It really varies by bank to bank.
Okay, great. Thank you for that clarification. Can we move on to new business?
You need a second motion to table the zoning one as well. That's the next item.
Okay.
I got an option for tabling item two.
Yeah, I would move to table the, what is it, the rezoning?
Correct.
Rezoning of 925 West Fourth.
I'll second.
Please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Pyros DeCarvallo?
Yes. Next item, please.
Item 10A, consider UV disinfection and secondary treatment preliminary design-build agreement.
My name's Brian Clennan. I'm the Director of Public Works. All right. Just wanted to provide a little bit of background about these two projects. The first one is the secondary treatment improvements. We have four aeration basins that are these four basins right here. Two of those basins were built in 2004. There it is. So these two basins were built in 2004. These two basins were built and installed in 1985. In 2019, the Kansas Department of Health and Environment issued the city a new wastewater treatment discharge permit, and that permit came with stricter ammonia requirements for our wastewater effluent. These two older basins, the ones built in 1985, are not able to meet those new requirements. So we worked with the Kansas Department of Health and Environment to extend the deadline for when we needed to meet those stricter ammonia requirements. So that new deadline is June 30th of 2022. So the proposed improvements would be to these two basins that were built in 1985 and will be making improvements so that we can then meet these new stricter ammonia requirements. And this is just a picture of some of the equipment that will be replaced as part of this project. This is one of the four blowers out there in our blower building that will be replaced. This is a picture of one of those 1985 basins that had been emptied and drained for some maintenance work. And here is the headers that introduce the air. Those headers will be replaced as part of the project. And then these are large pumps that recycle the wastewater into those basins. Those pumps won't be needed any longer once we install the new, more efficient equipment for the aeration basins. The second project is the UV disinfection project. This facility was installed in 1990, and parts are now very difficult to obtain. And the other thing that we've been seeing here over the past year is the wiring in our control panels has become very brittle and starting to short out in several of the control panels. So that's become a significant issue here just within the last year. And this is just a picture of some of the equipment in that facility. This is just a picture of the ballast. We've bought all the ballast that we could find for this facility, so there are no more out there on the market. This is just a picture of the inside of the cabinet with those ballasts. This is just a picture of our UV control cabinet, and then opening that cabinet up just showing you some of the wiring that's inside those pieces of equipment. So the issue at hand is, we sent out requests for qualification statements to seven engineering firms, and we received two qualification statements back, and we selected the team of Burns McDonald and CAS Construction for the project based on their project approach, their team, and their experience. And that team is the same team that is currently working on our intermediate pump station project, and they've done a very good job of communicating that project with us, of constructing that project, and they're actually ahead of schedule. So we've been very pleased with that team on that, on our most recent project with them. And then the experience that they showed in their qualification statement, they identified 14 UV systems that they've worked on in the states of Kansas and Missouri, and they identified 16 secondary treatment improvement projects that they've worked on in the states of Kansas and Missouri. So very experienced staff that they are proposing to work on our project. So city staff is recommending a design-build project delivery for the UV disinfection system, and that's just to help reduce our operational risks of that UV system, just a little bit fearful of how long we can keep that system up and running. And then we plan to evaluate a design-build versus a design-bid-build project for the secondary treatment project. And so we've got this project broken up into three phases. So the first phase is the phase in the contract that we're bringing to you today, and that is for the preliminary design and the guaranteed maximum price development for both the UV disinfection project and that secondary treatment project. And so that will create plans that are about somewhere around 40% or 50% complete, is what this phase would do, and allows the contractor then to give us a good, solid cost on what that project would cost. Then Phase 2 would be a construction contract for the UV disinfection project, and then Phase 3 would be a construction contract for the secondary treatment project if we choose to go the design-bid route, or we would bring a final design contract if we decide to go the design-bid-build route. And you can see the difference in time between design-bid or design-build and design-bid-build is about five months. So it would add about five more months to the project schedule if we decided to go that route on the secondary treatment. So from a financial perspective, the proposed agreement with Burns and McDonald and CAS for Phase 1 is a lump sum contract in the amount of $190,900. And after Phase 1 is complete, staff will bring contracts for Phase 2 and Phase 3 to the city council for review and approval. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
And the total cost is the 2.8 million after everything? That's including the 190,000 and then Phase 2 one?
That's right, and that is in...
That's estimated at this point off of?
Our 2018 facility planning study.
Okay. So we've already done a planning study on it, and that's what that 2.8 million came from. And then what exactly is the 19900? Is that just getting basically, what is that accomplishing in Phase 1?
Right. That gets us to plans about 40% or 50% complete. So we'll have some actual plans, some drawings available at that time, and we'll be working with our contractor to identify how much that project's going to cost to construct.
So it's just like $200,000 for some blueprints?
Right.
Okay.
For the design, yeah.
All right. And that's going in and figuring out. And is that the, what, and would we be putting in something that sustains longer than 30 years, or what's the lifespan of this for the 2.8 million?
I would say, well, for the 2.8 million...
Like, what's our final product?
Yeah.
We don't want to start investing in something if we, we need to make sure we're going down the road of something that's going to be efficient and long-term.
Right. And the 2.8 million is just for the secondary treatment project. It's another little over a million dollars for the UV disinfection.
For the UV disin, okay. So it's 3.8 million.
And again, right, it's going to be closer to probably 4.2, 4.3 when we're all said and done, because those are $2,018, and this project will be constructed in 2020 and 2021.
And is there new technology as far as UV goes?
Yes.
That makes it more efficient?
Right. The RV building, again, was built 30 years ago. And so we had a different treatment system at that time, it was a trickling filter system, and that wastewater was a lot cloudier. And so we had to have some significant lighting to basically sterilize the pathogens that are in that wastewater before it goes to the Ark River. So now, with our improvements, the secondary treatment system that we've got... So, now, with our improvements, the, the secondary treatment system that, that we've got, um, that was installed after the, um, the UV was, was installed, our wastewater effluent's much clearer. So, yeah, we'll have, we'll see an energy reduction.
Yeah, and what's the maintenance cost of the UV? Cause I know that some of that equipment, like the ballasts and bulbs can be quite expensive. What's the long, like, so you have the price tag of the four million, what's the maintenance in cost?
Yeah, and I don't have the maintenance cost for just that facility. At my disposal.
But we would be making an upgrade to where it would cost, would there be some cost savings and some efficiency savings?
Right, there'll be efficiency, especially in electricity.
Especially in electricity, okay, that, that's good.
Right.
And then, like I said, the one ninety's just for the blueprints?
The one ninety's for the design, yeah.
For the design.
Yeah, it's, and it's really the ideas that that consultant's bringing to the table, the alternatives that they'll look at and, you know, investigating, investigating the different pumps, um, and, and the blowers for all these facilities, yeah.
All right, that's the only questions I have.
Okay.
Brian, we're gonna spend a minute here. I'm gonna ask a couple of questions about design bid versus design, uh, bid build.
You bet.
I see phase one and phase two, you're recommending a design, uh, build, correct?
Right.
Yeah, right. What would be the driving factors when you get to phase three as to whether or not you choose the design build or the design bid build? And what might be the differences there?
Right. You know, one of the things that appeals to me is the saving, the five months. It's five less months of staff time, five less months of my time to complete that project. You know, the other thing is just what does that cost look like, you know, based on, on the design build? Cause we'll have this guaranteed maximum price that the contractor's presenting at the time and, and we'll be able to evaluate whether, you know, we think that cost i- is what we want to move forward with or not. I can tell you, you know, the intermediate pump station was really my first time going through the design build project.
The design build, okay.
And, and there were some neat things that, that I got out of it. It was much more of a team effort. So, we had our engineer, we had our contractor, and we had our operations and maintenance staff all sitting around the table and evaluating the project. And we did see some, um, cost savings, um, I think through that process. And, and just one example, um, part of the intermediate pump station was installing this forty-two inch, um, gravity line between a couple of our basins. And our engineer had, had designed a couple manholes to, we had a conflict where we had a, a large twenty-seven inch pipe that was in the way of the forty-two inch pipe. So, we needed to drop or lower that forty-two inch pipe. And our engineer had laid out a couple manholes on each side of this conflict to drop that pipe. And, you know, the, our contractor put together the cost and it was coming in around four hundred thousand dollars. And he was like, that's really expensive for, for this section of line. And he said, "We could put in a couple bins, save a considerable amount of money and, um, accomplish the same thing." So, it was just that idea ended up saving over a hundred thousand dollars by, by having that contractor involved at the time of, of the design. You know, and another example on the intermediate pump station was, uh, the city, we had asked for a hoist to remove our pumps. We've got three large submersible pumps that are going in to replace those big screw pumps out there at the wastewater treatment facility. And so, the contractor again sat down with our operations staff and the engineer and, and he priced out what that hoist was gonna cost. It's gonna cost a hundred thousand dollars. You know, that was expensive for, for this hoist, so we got to talking and, well, okay, operations staff, how often do we need to remove these pumps so that we can maintain them? And are there any other ways that we could do that? And so, we got to looking and, we don't have to remove those pumps every six months. We have to remove them about every three years to do some maintenance, change the oil on, on them. And, and decided, well, we could rent a crane for quite a bit cheaper than building this hoist that we're gonna have to then maintain in the long term, that equipment. And so, we have decided to eliminate that hundred thousand dollar cost out of that, out of that project. So, those are some of the benefits that I've found through the design build project.
You know, and we went through a very similar process with the sports arena. And, 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 you know, Brian talked about the team approach where we had the design team and the contractors in the same room. And, of course, time was a big deal there and so, it got done quicker. But they talked through issues as opposed, as opposed to, here's the design and, you know, four or five months later, they're bidding on this and there's a lot of change orders that come through that process. And so, it, you know, I really saw the value in that, that, uh, construction process through the arena, much the same as Brian's explained today.
We're just not having a construction manager?
Yeah, the C M A C, yeah.
Yeah.
Construction Management.
Yeah.
Yeah. Brian, you know, as well, I worked on that stuff before. I, and it's about time we get it done.
Right.
Yeah, that stuff is, and when I worked on it, it was a mess, so. Yeah, I can, I can see where you're coming from. It's about time.
All right, thanks, Stephen.
Are there further questions or motion?
Okay, well, I will move to approve the agreement with Burns and McDonald and CAS for phase one preliminary design and guaranteed minimum price GMP development in a lump sum contract in the amount of a hundred and ninety thousand, nine hundred dollars and authorize the mayor's sign.
Second. Some motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Solner?
Yes.
Hiros Day Carvallo?
Yes, next item, please.
Item ten B, consider funding request for creation of social detox and inpatient treatment center.
Okay, thanks for your patience.
I don't know how to work this. We do have slides. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It's up, now how do I change it?
Just hit the.
Okay.
Extra button.
If you wanna point at it, we suggest using the laser pointer because if you step back here, we can't hear you anymore.
Thank you, I, excuse me, I'm Shar Gonzalez with New Beginnings Incorporated. Thank you for taking the time to, to, uh, consider this proposal. I'd like to introduce, uh, the folks here today. There's retired Sheriff Randy Henderson, who's, um, going to speak about the drug, uh, Task Force Impact Panel. Uh, he's representing them and Harold Casey, who's the CEO of the Substance Abuse Center of Kansas. So, I'm gonna let, uh, Sheriff Henderson take over.
Thank you, Randy Henderson, retired sheriff Reno County. In nineteen ninety-eight, I had just finished an assignment with the Hutchinson Police Department, uh, working narcotics for nine years. I was very proud of the, uh, things we had accomplished, but we needed, uh, an end-all to the drug problem in Reno County. And part of that was a drug detox facility. We were making a lot of arrests, trying to change lives, only to fall off the end, uh, cause there was not a detox facility. That's when I first met Shar Gonzalez. Shar had been working on this project, uh, several years. Uh, but unfortunately, the funding and lack of support from the community at that time, it fell through. Over the next twenty years, there's been several attempts of getting a project like this going again. In twenty fourteen, when we were, uh, finishing construction at the Reno County Correctional Facility, we started a, um, crime reduction task force with some grant money. And that allowed us to start some programs in our correctional facility that really started making an impact on the drug culture and the community. Unfortunately, we reached again the end where there was no detox facility and people were falling off the ledge. This is about the time that then mayor, now mayor again, uh, came along and started the work of, uh, uh, getting a group of individuals together again that morphed into the Drug Coalition. This group has grown into four groups, uh, involving more than sixty individuals from different community groups in the, in the, uh, city and county. Uh, one of these groups is tasked with, again, the detox facility. Uh, Amanda Hewlett with the Hutchinson Hospital did alcohol drug analysis for Reno County covering dates, October twenty fifteen through May twenty sixteen. What she found was together, the Reno County Correctional Facility and the Hutchinson Regional Medical Center, was spending close to estimate five million dollars annually on the drug problems in Reno County. From this analysis, it was clear that Reno County had a serious drug problem and it was causing profound impact on the county jail, the hospital and the community. We were looking for ways to reallocate funds to have a positive impact on the community financially, socially, and to improve the quality of life. This is where Shar and, from New Beginnings and Harold from Substance Abuse Center of Kansas come in. But before I turn it over to them, let me, there's been some, uh, misunderstandings recently. We had a new medical detox facility, uh, come in Breakthrough, uh, Breckin, Brecklin Gestison is here from Breakthrough. If you have questions of her. But the difference in the medical facility, they started in, uh, December twenty nineteen. Medical detox is if an individual is wanting to kick the habits of drugs. They normally go through a detox, withdrawals, those kind of things. If they try to do that on their own, they oftentimes get very ill, so they refer back to the drugs as opposed to completing the detox. And Harold can talk, uh, about the difficulty getting people into detox facilities away from Hutchinson. Uh, so, that's where Brecklin and her group comes in. Uh, they can put an individual in their facility three to five days and get them medically detoxed. After that, then the individual can go to the social detoxes, what Shar is gonna be discussing with you, where they work on the mental, uh, mental health and the social aspects of the detox. So, that's the difference in the, in the facilities. We are not competing with each other. In fact, we are complementing each other. I'm now gonna turn it over to, to Shar. You next?
Nope.
Okay, turn it over to Harold.
I just wanted to point out that this slide up here is the, represents the groups that have, um, been meeting for over two years to find a solution to this. And this was their strategic plan and if you notice, priority number two, treatment and recovery, uh, to reduce gaps in the continuum of services offered in Reno County. Not where it.
Uh, Madam Mayor, good morning. Uh, thank you for your time. Um, I am Harold Casey. I'm the Director or CEO of the Substance Abuse Center of Kansas. We have an office here in town over on four hundred West Second. We've been providing services in Hutchinson since nineteen ninety-five. Our particular agency covers twenty-nine counties in central and southeast Kansas. So, I have staff from, uh, Hutchinson all the way to Fort Scott, Kansas, and then Pittsburgh all the way to, like, Kingman. We travel, um, across those areas. We go to hospitals, jails, homeless shelters. Um, that's how we began to work with Shar at New Beginnings. Um, we rent space, uh, from them right now for the services we're providing in Hutchinson. So, we travel across those areas, working in, um, uh, three different prisons and then also Wichita work release. About, uh, six hundred people a month is the number of people that we see. And, uh, we are an access to care agency, so we see them and refer them, um, to treatment and then provide case management. Um, we opened up, uh, detox ran into, or Wichita, uh, ran into the same problem about ten years ago. A large facility closed in Wichita that was providing about twenty-five beds for detox services. Interesting enough, um, when I came into this field in nineteen eighty-two, uh, I went to work at a detox in Wichita that was a thirty-bed residential unit. And then, there are two other agencies that had about forty beds together. So, in nineteen eighty-two, there were seventy detox beds in Wichita. Five years ago, um, there were three. And, uh, ran into the same problem there as, uh, we see happening here is officers can pick people up, but they have nowhere to take them, um, except to the hospital. Uh, many times, they haven't broken the law. They're just intoxicated. And, uh, the public is calling because they're passed out on the street or whatever that circumstance might be. It becomes very expensive for officers, uh, at least from my experience, to have to take them to the hospital. They can't leave. They have to, uh, wait until that person's either admitted to the hospital or discharged. Many times, they're uninsured and, um, they've, um, chronically been in and out of the hospital and so, they're not, uh, well appreciated sometimes there. Um, and sometimes they not have the medical problems necessary for them to be admitted to the hospital. Uh, but the hospital can't discharge them because they're intoxicated, um, and there's liability with that. So, they may hold them for hours and officers are stuck there with that. Part of, uh, what we looked at in our cost analysis, Wichita State University did a cost analysis of the detox in Wichita and, um, we thought it might be, uh, important for you to look at that. We provided thirteen-bed detox there. We do have fourteen beds, but we keep one bed open, um, as much as we can. And that is for, uh, if a pregnant woman comes in who is on methamphetamine or alcohol or a combination of drugs. So, we always try to have one bed open for a pregnant woman or a woman with children. But, um, when we looked at, uh, this is for cost savings of one year, uh, on a thirteen-bed unit. And the savings, uh, overall, it was ten million dollars for the community. Now, that is a combination of, uh, hospital avoidance, um, and then, uh, state hospital and the local sheriff's department, EMS, the police department, um, and the like. These are conservative estimates. Uh, WSU, Wichita State University Business College provided this cost avoidance study and, and they're not going to exaggerate or anything of that sort. They're very careful, um, about their estimates. So, these are conservative estimates. But as you can see, uh, the costs are just, uh, enormous and the savings are, uh, worthwhile in us providing this service. Anything else you can think of, everyone?
No, it's, the next is, uh.
Yeah, this is our budget.
What you proposed to do.
Sure, this is a proposed budget. One of the difficulties with providing detox is that there's no funding for detox. When we look at the Wichita detox, again, um, we get referrals from Hutchinson. We also get referrals from Butler County, um, Sumner County, uh, and all around. For the most part, every day, we are full. There may be some part of the day where we have a couple of beds open and then other parts of the day, uh, we're completely full. So, because there is no funding, Medicaid is not going to pay for social detox. These individuals don't have insurance. About ninety-eight percent of the people we're admitting are indigent, meet federal public guidelines and are uninsured. So, they're not gonna go to a, a medical detox probably. They don't have the money, uh, to support that kind of stay. Just recently, I had an individual who I sent to a medical detox and, um, that was about five to six thousand dollars just for a medical detox of four to five days. So, in looking at this, we have to have some means of, uh, supporting financially the, the detox unit. And, uh, the only way we know to do that is be able to, to provide treatment services where there is reimbursement because for detox, there is none. We look at the service we're providing in Wichita, the city of Wichita provides us a hundred thousand a year. Uh, the county provides us free room and board and, uh, no cost for utilities for our thirteen-bed unit. Uh, the state of Kansas provides us about four hundred and fifty thousand a year, uh, as a grant for a crisis center in Wichita. So, uh, you're not going to charge anybody and get funding. It's very difficult. So, if we're providing treatment, a combination of medical card and, uh, drug diversion programs through SB, uh, one twenty-three, um, some other kind of funding and self-pay, we think we can support the detox, um, which is, I think, a very good way of doing this. So, overall, the budget's about one point two million or give or take. And it will support about seventeen staff. Most of those are full-time. Two or three of those may be part-time. So, any other questions? I'd be glad to answer.
So, you're using the treatment piece to supplement or?
Correct.
Or to subsidize the detox? And so, overall, that's the sustainability plan?
Correct. Correct. I am able to maybe go to the state and request some funding for the project. I have already been talking to them about that, but there has to be a timing and probably the next set of grants that would come out, that would be awarded in July, so probably around April or May, I might be able to apply for some of that money. Understanding though, that those federal block grant funds are really already allocated. And so the money you're asking for is going to be money that was unspent for some reason if a program closed or didn't have the amount of business that they had. We have a waiting list right now for people that are indigent, that are coming into our system. If I assess somebody today, I may be, be able to get them a treatment bed in March or April. So it's a two to three-month waiting list for many people. If you have a medical card, I can get you into treatment within a couple of days, 24 to 48 hours. Other insurance, the same. If you're a pregnant woman or one woman child, I can get you into treatment within 24 hours. But if you're a guard variety alcoholic addict with no children and you're not pregnant, then you're going to wait about two to three months. And that's also the second part of this, providing detox and then also trying to fill in a gap of services for those on the waiting list.
I got a question for you. When you have a patient that goes in there, do you go after them later? I mean, is there any way going after them later to get the money back or that's not a, to do that? I know that they don't have insurance and all that stuff, right?
Yeah, it's really a combination of those things. When we look at our services in Wichita, about a third of those clients are homeless and another third are living in what you would call a precarious circumstance. They're living with other addicts, other alcoholics. There's domestic violence. There's other kind of drug dealing or crimes going on. So possibly over a period of time, somebody who gets into recovery is, is going to then start working then. But they're going to be paying taxes and that's, a good example is myself. I went to treatment in 1980 and 81. I went to a county, state-supported program. So basically the state paid for my drug and alcohol treatment. That was an outpatient program. At the time, I was a single father with a daughter that I had custody of who was four years old at the time. I think what's important about that is although the state paid for my treatment, today I'm 30, I think 38, 39 years of sobriety. More important than that is I have a program where we have 97 staff. This would add another 16, 17 staff. About half of those staff are people that are in recovery. And I think what is important about that is the investment is tenfold in its return to the community. These people are sober, they're working, they're paying taxes. They are many times starting their own businesses and hiring people like us who are in recovery. And that pays back to the communities. So I think it's a good investment in that sense. But no, you probably can't go back a year later, two years later and say.
I think it's more of a return on investment by investing in your people.
Correct.
And getting those people off drugs and then into society where they're going out, they're buying groceries and they're buying maybe even a property five years down the road and they're becoming, or we would probably recoup it through the taxes and sales tax and other options.
Correct.
Because you're invested in your people. Because I really do believe that if we could get a large percent of people that are addicted to drugs in the workforce, we've got to work on getting jobs here and then we got to work on their ability to get clean and get to those jobs. So I think if we really work on recovery of people that are addicted and then getting the jobs here, I think that's going to be a winning combination. Because a lot of times, people just, you learn to live in that lifestyle because that's how you survive. And that's the only way you know how to survive. So it comes to the point where you have to learn, you have to relearn everything you've ever known. And I think that's where the drug treatment comes in and outpatient comes in and New Beginnings comes in. I have a dear friend that actually worked for New Beginnings. And I, when I had to try to find her detox center, it was really hard. I had no idea what to even start with and it was a whole new adventure for me. But I had to drive all the way to Wichita because they, they gave like gas vouchers here, but who has a car or, you know, who are you getting ahold of to get there? So I have somebody that lost their kid, he was addicted to heroin, that just wants a better life and just didn't know how to get it. And it took me going through all of that. And now she's a supervisor for New Beginnings of the Green Team. And it's like someone that had went from losing everything to now she works. She just got her first car, like, you know, so she's going to be paying taxes on that car. She works every day, she pays sales tax. So I really think it's an investment in the people. I would say though, that I caution, I don't want to see, like, I do believe in investment in your people and getting the combination of the jobs here and then the drug treatment facilities. But I, I don't want to see like free needle giveaways and stuff like that. So we don't end up with all that in our streets, you know? I understand there is, you want to prevent people from getting diseases and all that. But there comes a point where you just kind of have to say, they, you can either choose this life of being clean or choose that life of being in drugs. And that's where I draw the line personally on drug treatment. But, so I, I do think it's beneficial, so I'll stop with the words there.
Mr. Casey, I just have a question.
Sure.
Forgive me for not being familiar with SAC. Would you take a few minutes and basically explain how you, what's your organization, how it's structured and?
Absolutely.
What the history of SAC is and in Kansas?
We were, sure, thank you. We were funded initially in 1995. The issues that the state had was that women and women with children, which is their priority population, would call and ask for drug and alcohol treatment. They're actively using at that time probably meth, cocaine, heroin and alcohol or a combination of those drugs. The issue was when they would call and say, I'm using, I want help, their assessment appointment could be six to eight weeks away. And then the other part was providers at that time typically didn't travel. You had to come to the provider. And if you don't have gas money, you don't have means as you were talking about, a vehicle, which is common, then how do you get to a facility? So we were funded, I think initially.
And when you talk about we.
Substance Abuse Center of Kansas was initially funded as a pilot project.
Okay.
At that time, we were nine counties when we first started in 1995. Reno was one of those counties. And the idea is that we would provide staff. We would see pregnant women and women with children within 24 to 48 hours of a call. So we are required, when a woman calls who's pregnant, to schedule her appointment within 24 hours or for a call. And we still have that today, including Saturdays. So we're open Saturdays and we'll see somebody Saturday or Monday. That is part of our stipulations and our contracts with the state. So those are still the priority populations, but what we have seen is that those people, like in the jail, I don't really care which jail you pick, about 90% of the people that are admitted to a jail are positive for drugs or alcohol on their admission, although their crime may not be drug or alcohol related. But it's, and I think the sheriff would probably agree to that. It's become a drug and alcohol treatment center or holding center for addicts and alcoholics or a mental health center. Many of those people do have mental health problems along with their addiction. I certainly did 38 years ago. Depression is a very common, you know, mental health-related problem to addiction. Why wouldn't you be depressed? You've lost everything, you're getting divorced, you don't have a job, you're unemployable. Of course, you're depressed. So anyway, we travel and see about 600 people a month across that 29-county area. We refer them to treatment and then we provide case management. We initially did not do treatment for the first 15 years that we were in business. We referred everybody out to the provider network. We did begin to do treatment in Wichita and very quickly, within a year of that, began to do treatment here in Hutchinson. The reason for that is because we have this indigent population that at that time in Hutchinson, we would assess somebody, they would need outpatient treatment and the waiting list was 10 weeks long for them to get into outpatient treatment. And so we began to do treatment and for the most part, it's that indigent population that a lot of the providers have a long waiting list for and are not going to be able to admit them. We try and admit them immediately and we provide services without a waiting list. Many of those people should be or do qualify for inpatient treatment, but they can't get in again because there's such a long waiting list. So we begin to work with them immediately. If they continue to, to use, which sometimes, many times occurs, then when their bed date comes up, then we'll refer them to and get them into inpatient treatment.
Thank you, sir.
So we're in all the DCF, Department of Children and Family Services. We're in all of their offices and work with the population there. We work with almost all the corrections offices in that 29-county area. And frankly, for those part, we work with a population that nobody else wants to work with, which we like.
Well, he didn't mention the peer mentoring program out of Substance Abuse Center of Kansas where peers come back in and actually mentor people. I think it's huge, people helping people who've been there. What you see up here is the site plan for Walnut Court Apartments LLC. When we applied for tax credits 15 years ago, it was the first tax credit project that we had done. And we combined transitional housing with 24 apartments in the back. The way low-income housing tax credits are is they age out, at which point the investors move out of the program and either the, the nonprofit that is the managing member of the LLC continues to operate it or it becomes wholly part of the nonprofit's portfolio. That for Walnut Court Apartments, December 31st, 2019 was its last day. The partners, we bought the, bought them out according to our operating agreement from 15 years ago and now are the managing, the sole partner in the LLC, which we're working on moving that, dissolving the LLC and moving that into our portfolio. We had to decide what we wanted to do with this, to continue the way we were going, but having had such a need for detox and treatment, we took a look at making this possibly that facility, at least the front part of it. And the reason for that is, why it's so important to us as well, is that 80, 85% of the people that we work with in transitional housing and homelessness are actually the same people. They are, they have addiction issues, this is the reason why they're homeless. We needed this service. We needed to be able to reach out, find a place. And those people that are under the influence in this kind of weather are most likely going to be severely affected if they aren't somewhere. And the best place to be would be in a detox center. So the Board of Directors took a look at this and made a proposal that we would move our 16 units of transitional housing into our other 20 units of transitional housing, speed up the program, work at housing, using a housing specialist to move them out into the community in permanent housing and make this available. And we've partnered with SAC since, I don't know, 20, since 2006, when they came into Walnut Court and provided services for our folks. So it was a natural partnership and then we brought that to the table for the Drug Task Force Impact Panel. That's how we got to this place. Here's what we determined needed to happen. There are, after 15 years of use, they're significant, there's significant reinvestment that needs to happen. That's on us. Anything that, that's something that has to be brought back up to our original standards, that's on us. But the adaptation for a treatment facility in the front is the cost that we're actually looking at. And specifically, we were grandfathered in when we did this for fire suppression. So there are no, there's no sprinkling system in these 16 units or the whole part of it. That whole downstairs has commercial kitchen, meeting rooms, dining rooms, offices, et cetera, because it used to be our, our main offices. Excuse me. So the fire suppression system is, is about $100,000. That requires putting in the system, but we also are going to have to come in and put a wider water supply line in to service that suppression system. Then there's, there's other adaptations that need to happen. HIPAA law requires certain things. And, and so it, altogether, it's about $200,000. So the task force is looking at raising the other 100. We're trying to get city and county government to help us with this so that we can get this up and running and working for the community. As far as the other adaptations, we, as soon as we finalize things, will bring money in from our investors that were in our reserves. We can finance most of it with that. Then we'll turn around, there's no debt on this property at the moment and we can take out a mortgage to finish the renovations that can actually be covered by the leasing of the front side. Excuse me. There's been a question about taxes and I just want to make sure that everyone understands. When we received this building in a donation, it came with a $129,000 back tax bill. And we could have abated those taxes, but we decided not to. We went out, we raised the money, we paid that $129,000 so that it was free and clear. And in the, in all of our properties, let me see, this is the upstairs area. This is what one of those rooms looks like. This is the capital cost we were talking about. Oh, and that's it. In the last five years, New Beginnings on its properties has paid well over a half a million dollars in taxes. So we, we don't go and exempt our taxes. Our LLCs are for profits that we are the managing member of. That's, that's it. So we're requesting $50,000 from the city to help us with the fire suppression system so that we can get the treatment facility, the detox treatment facility up and running.
John or Paul, can you touch on the availability of special alcohol funds for this project and kind of what those limits are?
We, yes, we have, both Paul and I have discussed this. Paul's looked at it and determined that those funds would be eligible for this project. And, you know, we've got some unbudgeted reserves in that special alcohol program that could be utilized for this. So yes, it would be an eligible use of those, those funds.
I've had some questions from people in the community about why are we giving money, money to a nonprofit where, since that's typically like a United Ways purview, but this situation's a little bit different in that the state legislature established a fund that we, money from Liquor Buy the Drink, I believe, anytime a drink is bought in the community, certain amount of that, those taxes. Anytime a, a drink is bought in the community, certain amount of that, those taxes, I believe, go into this fund. And, and you can only use that fund for, um, drug and alcohol treatment type efforts. And so that's what makes this project a little bit different. And then, uh, plus as everybody has touched upon, I think, uh, the community as a whole recognizes that the drug problem in this community, uh, like many other communities is pervasive and impacts each and every one of us on some level. So this is certainly, um, I think would be something that the community as a whole would, could get behind.
Just to clarify the funding, that, um, a third, you know, we, we collect the amount and a third of it goes into this pot.
Yes.
Third of it into parks, you know, type projects and a third in the general fund, so.
What's the balance for?
Well, we're, I mean, we're probably, we're projected that, uh, at the end of the year, we'd have about $70,000 in reserves. Um, we've allocated in 2020, budget wise, um, about 77,000 of that. So there, there's reserves there. We haven't had the meetings, the president or the, uh, funding allocation hearings yet for 2020.
Where, where did the, um, where does the funds currently get allocated to? Like if we were to?
Well, just to give an example of who was approved this past year, uh, is that the question?
Yes, the question, yeah.
Uh, Big Brothers and Big Sisters, Boys and Girls Club, Communities That Care, Reno County Drug Court and SRO. And these, and these groups make presentations to a panel.
Would these ones be impacted if we were to?
No, there would be available funds to hear those grant requests again. They have to come back and make another presentation for funding. Uh, there could be other organizations, but, you know, again, it's pretty specific to, you know, purposes of what those funds would be used for.
Uh, I'd like to ask Chief Beer if you wouldn't mind coming up chief for just a minute. Sharon explained that, uh, back 15 years ago, the project was abated or not abated, but the grandfathered for the fire suppression. What today has changed and what is, is requiring a fire suppression system to be installed?
Steve Beer, Fire Chief Hutchinson Fire. Um, I'm not sure exactly, code changes do change. Uh, we're using the 2012 codes right now in the city of Hutchinson. And, um, under that code provision, um, the type of occupancy, I'm not exactly familiar with the project at hand. My fire marshal, I'm sure is totally up to date on it. I can get back to you with that answer, but I'm sure it has to do with the type of occupancy and the change in the number of beds that are being utilized.
Is it the square footage or is it the occupancy or what?
Combination of square footage, combination of the type of use of, of the building and what its intended use was. So, um, really doesn't answer your question a hundred percent, but I don't have the code right in front of me right now, so I.
Trent, do you have any insight on it? Yeah, Trent.
Trent Maxwell, building official for the city. Um, I've learned about this project just from hearing about it. But the use is what dictates it. Anytime the change of use happens, then you look at how that use impacts, uh, the code. This is my guess, I haven't seen any plans, but I imagine it's an I use, it's an institute, that's any hospital, anyone receiving care that, uh, potentially doesn't have the ability to get themselves out of, uh, of a building or something. So those requirements would kick in based on the use.
And is that fire suppression for the entire complex or just for this portion that you're renovating for?
It's just for the front section.
Just for the front section?
The back section is, uh, 24 permanent affordable housing units, which we will continue to operate as such.
Okay. And is there fire suppression system in those 24 units?
They're individual, they're individual apartments and there's no fire suppression.
And there's no requirement by code for those units?
No, code only affects what is being altered or changed.
What is being altered or changed?
And so if the back remains as is, um, it'll stay as is. And that's an R use group as a residential, probably an R four use group.
So when we talk about change, are we talking about structural change or its uses?
It's just how you're using it. We could take this space here, this is an assembly space and convert it to, um, an institute type space. And the restrictions or requirements for this space would totally change, even if you don't change the walls, the floor, nothing. It's based on, on the occupants inside.
As per the new, the new code?
That's any code, I, I'm very well, um, knowledgeable of 2003 code on. Uh, it's been in there since then. It's always based on the use group. That's how every code requirement is designed and.
And it was grandfathered back in 15 years ago, is that?
That I wasn't here, so that I don't know. Uh, in, in apartment or back then it was a hotel, those all require sprinkler systems. Um, when it was originally built, I'm not sure, uh, probably there may not have been something for it or at some point maybe there was some concession made. I don't believe the code made that concession back when they took the facility over. It was probably a city decision, I would imagine, made. That's my guess.
Okay, alright. Uh, I also have another question, Sharon. Can you, uh, share with us what your approach is with Reno County? And, and they anticipated they're participating in this request as well?
It's exactly the same.
As well as others?
Right. This is out of 200,000, it has to be, uh, uh, has to be raised. And I wanted to address kind of what, um, Jade had said in the sense that it's not New Beginnings who's going out and raising this money. It's the drug impact, the Drug Task Force Impact Coalition. We're part of that. But, uh, so that does include the United Ways. The other 100,000 has to be raised from within the community to make the changes necessary, uh, to be licensed as a facility for them.
So before the project would go forward and, um, fire suppression would be installed and so on, you would then be, you would need to raise the 200,000 dollars or all or a portion of it?
Uh, a portion of it. And, and hopefully at least the fire suppression. In order to open the facility, we need to raise the entire amount. There is a plan, there's a whole committee involved with the task force that is working on that. Um, and there is a, a plan for it. As far as the county is concerned, it's the exact same, um, proposal that we've made to you, to them.
On the 4th, right?
Uh, and it, we're scheduled to meet there at the 4th, make that presentation on the 4th of February.
Okay. So if, if, uh, we would choose to, uh, support this request, uh, then what would happen next with, with the other entities in order to?
We need to raise the rest of the money.
The 200,000?
Right. In order to open the facility, that's correct.
In order to open the facility.
Correct.
So without the 200,000 dollars, the facility does not open. Is that?
That's correct.
Is that correct? Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Other questions?
What would you anticipate your timeline being?
Well, there's several timelines. There is a fundraising, uh, doing the renovations timeline and an opening timeline, but we're projecting spring.
Of this year?
Mm-hmm. Spring to, uh, summer, early summer.
Well, I don't know a great deal about the, this detox facility in terms of how it would operate other than I've heard many, many conversations throughout the community about the need for it. And in my judgment, this is the right thing to do and it's the right thing for the city of Hutchinson to be a participant in this thing in good faith. And so with that, I would move to approve the request for a $50,000 contribution towards the adaption of Meadowlark Commons, a part of the Walnut Court Apartments, into a social detox and inpatient treatment center for the people with addictive disorders.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion from the council? Anybody in the audience? Okay, please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Solner?
Yes.
Pyros Day Carvalho?
Yes, next item, please.
Item 11, report to city officials.
Okay, I think we'll start with you, Nancy.
Nothing except welcome to our two new members and we will see you again in about two weeks.
Uh, no, I have nothing this morning.
Okay. Steve?
Yes, I'd like to, um, thank everybody who voted for me. I'd like to give a good thanks to, um, Steve DeKant. I can't, I appreciate what you've done. And I already know what it is to be here, all what I've done, walked the streets. It's not an easy job to do with the council people too. Mr. Inskeep, thank you very much for serving on the board. Um, we do appreciate when, um, citizens come up and step, believe me, I understand that now. Other than that, I expect all of us to work together. We're a family. This is, the city of Hutchinson is a family, like, um, Mr. Hooper said last night at the, uh, at Martin Luther King Celebration, I liked what he said. This, this whole city is a family, so let's get along. At that point, Mr. Dirdoff, I've got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
I, I'd like to repeat, repeal this, so do I wait or what, how do we do this?
Well, I think typically what would happen if you want to, any one of the council member would like to place something on the agenda, um, through a consensus to approval, to put it on a future agenda. And if the specific question is an ordinance to repeal the current rental registration. I think the point here is, and this is for the total council, that if there's support to repeal it, then let's put it, you know, on an agenda. And if there isn't a majority, then let's avoid that, uh, that whole conversation.
I would like to see it on the agenda for, um, February 4th.
I would support that as well. Okay. So, um, I don't know, we typically don't have to vote on that, but I see a consensus. And that's, and just, uh, councilman, uh, that's typically how that would work.
And can we also see?
Could I, could I just finish real quick?
Oh, sorry.
Typically how that would work is that if you or Sarah or anybody has an issue you'd like on an agenda, future agenda, you know, it's your, it's your meeting, you would bring it up at this time, um, in another meeting and, and then through a consensus to place it on a specific date or whatever that might do, so. So we'll take that and, and the, the plan would be to place that ordinance on the agenda, February the, um,
Fourth.
Fourth, uh, right. So we'll do that.
And then can we also get an agenda for the decriminalization of, um, not anything that has health or safety, but just the cosmetics? Maybe amending the, um, property management code to pull that out and then start a separate program and committee for, for the cosmetic issues as far as fines go?
I mean, I have no idea what that, what that looks like, what the agenda specific is. It's something that you guys would need to kind of vet out.
I would like to see the housing authority kind of work on that and put a plan together and bring it back to us.
Yeah.
That's typically how, yeah.
Entity to do some investigation and outline some possible changes.
Joe, maybe you can reach out through the next Housing Commission meeting and visit about your proposal.
Can we set some kind of date for them to respond back to us? Maybe like three weeks?
What, Ryan, Ryan has a comment?
Yes, sorry.
Okay.
At the last Housing Commission meeting, um, the Housing Commission did create a committee to begin looking at our enforcement procedures, um, and, and figuring out ways to maybe amend it to, um, be, um, to, to work better with, with people. So that work has begun and, um, and I would anticipate there will be a report that will come forward to this body at some point, so.
Can we set a date for them to respond back to us, fine?
I mean, you certainly could. Um, I, I would respectfully request, um, at least for maybe us to get one meeting under our belts, um, to kind of see, wrap our arms around what the issue actually is and go from there. But Lisa Gleason is, uh, been the one who's been kind of heading that and we're trying to find a meeting time in the next week or so to begin that process, so.
So it's, you know, volunteer group, so schedules are always not as, as easy to pick together.
Well, I understand, like if we gave them a month.
I think you're.
I think it's going to be 60.
Two months, two months or more, depending.
Because more than like, more than likely, yeah, cause more than likely what will happen is there will be some time where the group will discuss this. Uh, we'll probably need to reach out to others in the community as well to ensure that we have, um, as many voices at the table. Um, and then I would imagine that, uh, they would then take some set of recommendations to the Housing Commission. The Housing Commission would approve that, um, uh, make a recommendation to bring that to council for, and who knows at this point what that package of recommendations looks like. But yeah, you're probably looking at 60 days at a minimum considering Housing Commission only meets once a month.
Yeah, I would like to see it as soon as possible that way, that, cause I do think we need to amend the housing code to decriminalize, um, cosmetic issues. So I would think that would be urgent, just to help.
Certainly understand, uh, the, the need for, uh, urgency on this, but I will also say that this is a fairly complex issue and, um, and there's, there's a lot of pieces with this. There's city staff, there's landlords, there's tenants, there's property owners. Um, there's, there's many people that probably are going to need to be brought to the table and are going to have conflicting points.
For, um, you to convene a meeting with Lisa Gleason and maybe have that discussion in the subcommittee about, um, what an appropriate timeline would be.
Absolutely. I'd be happy to do that.
Could you come back at the next meeting and report on that?
I'd be happy to bring back report on February 4th.
That'd be really helpful. I think it's just, um, a good point that we need to keep it at the forefront.
Yeah, absolutely.
Our conversations. There's a lot going on in the city that could get lost. So really appreciate your willingness to do that.
Absolutely. I'd be happy to bring back report on February 4th. Thank you.
Great. Now Steve, did you have other items?
I just wanted to say I'm ready for this work. Let's get our city back together and get going, get jobs and let's get together and work together. We're a team. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. What did you have, Sharon?
I just wanted to thank everybody for the opportunity to serve the community and I can't wait to get started and, well, I'm already started.
Yeah.
So that's really exciting and thank, I just want to thank everybody.
Well, you two had a really, you kind of thrown to the wolves type of a meeting. This is, uh, this is a lot of tough issues, so, uh, congratulations on, on taking your oath and look forward to working with you. Again, thank you to, um, our council members who stepped off for all of your hard work. I also wanted to make a one, one small comment about, um, oral communications. Um, I think it's the goal of everybody on this body to, um, be as open and transparent and accessible as possible. So, um, if you have something to bring, uh, before the council, I really heartily encourage you, um, to try to make it to a meeting and if that will fit your schedule and, and don't be afraid to address us. We're a really welcoming group. I know it can be intimidating. Um, I do want to point out that sometimes, um, people who have items on the agenda have waited 60, even 90 days to get their item on the agenda. So it's important that we do, um, try to move through oral communications, um, under the guidelines that are set with those five minutes. It's not out of disrespect or that we don't want to hear what you have to say, but it's, it's really because we've got people traveling from other cities to come here, who have gone through the process to, to get their item on, on the agenda, which is a business meeting. So just wanted to remind everybody of that. And also if you have, um, an issue that, um, again, that you want to bring up, oral communications, great opportunity to highlight some of those issues. If it's going to require deep work and a huge change of the status quo, probably not the most appropriate time to get it done. I think that if you could reach out to your council member and discuss it with them, if you could reach out to the city manager or the appropriate commission, let's try to, try to use methods that are going to bring about the most progress and get the most work done. Again, it's, it's a great way to highlight things that have been forgotten or that you feel are, are unjust, but, um, let's also go through the appropriate channels so we can actually get, um, things accomplished. So, um, also just wanted to really thank, thank all of you council for the extreme, um, honor of, of serving as mayor. I can't express how grateful I am for this opportunity.
Why we get the big bucks.
Yeah, that's right. The cold coffee.
Um, I guess, I almost forgot. So is there any way until we get this all figured out to maybe curb down the citations till we figure everything out? Or will that continue until we figure it out? Or is there any way to?
Well, you know, I, I think that comes back to the culture that we set as a council and that, that, that John sets. And if, it's kind of a, it's a difficult thing because if you're in an inspect, an inspector and you are, um, you take an oath to abide by a code and you feel like it's a personal liability if you don't. And so it's really just a matter of style, um, but it's also to them very much a matter of, of doing their job. So, um, I think we could as council maybe encourage them to, to do what they can and to work with individuals. I know that they do try to do that, but yeah, I, I, I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, I mean, and of course, safety issues are not the issue that I want. Like we definitely need to make sure we maintain a good safety issue as far as black mold, electrical, fire hazards and stuff like that. I'm just saying, is there anything we could do until we figure out a final solution about these cosmetic issues too? That way we're not just trying to squeeze a bunch in there at the, at the end before, you know, before they actually know what's going to happen. I would hate to have that.
Do you have any input on that, Paul or John?
No, I really don't.
Okay.
I mean, just, just for the record though, the, the property, you know, the, the rental registration is, is this piece. And the city still has the, you know, international property maintenance code that's in effect. So, uh, I mean, I, I think in two weeks you guys can deal with that issue. And, uh, you know, we've essentially did not start the registration of rentals purposely because of this potential outcome, which I'm glad we didn't. So I think that's a good step in the right direction. So I think everything will be fine.
Okay, great. Thank you. John, what do you have?
I, I do not have anything.
You let us off easy. Okay. Okay. Well, with that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Shall we move?
Is there a second?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Uh, yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Solner?
Piro St. Carvallo? Yes.
First one under your belt.
Oh.